My name is Bernie Neef. I'm on the board of the Community Center and I'd like to welcome everybody for showing up for our Gay Town meeting down here in Gay Town. I'd like to thank Bernice's Bakery for the goodies over there in the box, boxes, and also the Good Food Store who gave us a gift card to purchase some. Of course, I bought trail mix, being the good lesbian that I am. And there's also some smoked almonds for the boys.
Hey, I ate those.
We'll talk. Mark Hake left. Oh, there you are. He was gonna talk a little bit about membership, but perhaps, were you gonna do that now?
Uh, I can't.
Okay, well, we want you to take your banjo and get back to practice if you need to. Mark's gonna be in the production at the Children's Theater of Mame, so get tickets.
And I'm supposed to meet a butch tennis, don't laugh.
Honey, you are so butch.
You're other, I'm supposed to fill this out, which I don't, so. Membership, I'm just gonna give a very, very, very short report. Oh, I've been with the board about four or five years now. I don't even remember how many years, four or five. I always did it the old-fashioned way, sending out renewals, sending thank yous, signing, you know, going to a database and actually writing down each name and address for the month that needs to be renewed and then doing it the old-fashioned way.
And licking stamps.
And licking stamps, but it's gonna change, hopefully, probably a more 21st century style here with the database, but we need a new membership chairman, that's one thing, because I am resigning from the board, so that's one of the major positions that we will need filled. As far as membership, I think we're probably, what, about 100, 125, but then we have in our database four, 300? Four, okay, I thought 400, but about 300 or a bit more. So, we have a lot of people in the database, and of course, that database is available for Outwards, and what, as I recall, maybe John in Outwards, and you folks can talk about this, but you condense the Outwards list for those that receive the newspaper, so. Any questions? Okay, that's my membership report. By the way, one of the emphasis tonight, we're gonna keep this short, reports are gonna be five minutes or less, and then we welcome feedback as we progress through the meeting, so, thank you.
Good job, Mark. And thank you, Mark, for being on the board for so long and for all your work. And I'll miss you. Like Mark said, this is gonna be short and sweet, we've got entertainment for you as well, I won't tell you what that is, just it's a little kind of a hook in the. I'm gonna talk a little bit about outreach and what the Community Center is doing as far as outreach, and I'd also like to get some feedback from community members as to what else we can do. Right now, for outreach, we've got Outwards in several locations around the state, and we're always, seems like, getting another one, you know, Great Falls, Kalispell, just to connect with the community, and also, you know, we have the Yahoo groups through the Community Center and also the Lesbian Chat Yahoo group to get information out to people that way, personal emails, but there are folks that I've come in contact with who aren't connected with emails and the internet, you know, how do we reach those folks? So, if people have other ideas on how we could better reach everyone in the community, please call the Community Center, talk to me, or any one of the board members, they're gonna introduce themselves right now. That I, go Josh.
My name is Josh Peters-Locke-Bride, and I've been on the board for less than a year now. I don't know how to say it.
What do you do?
No, what do I do for a living?
No, no, you're on the board.
What do I do on the board? Yeah, Black and White Ball, I'm on the Black and White Ball Committee, so, yeah.
Good question.
My name is John Freeland, and I've been on the board for two years, so I have at least another year left, and I, on the board, I'm primarily in charge of the Black and White Ball, or a tier of that, and then also I do, oh gosh, so many other jobs at the center. Supervise the work-study, which is something really exciting that the center now has, I don't think we had it last year, last year's meeting, but we do have work-study students now through the University of Montana, so I supervise them and also help Miha with volunteers.
John is like the master of everything. You ask if there's anyone that would help with the committee, and John is like right there, so we appreciate everything that you do, John.
My name's Oscar, and I've just joined the board, recent arrival here from Oakland, California. I have not been assigned to any particular committees yet, but I'm hoping to work with Library Project and whatever else comes up.
Great, thanks, Oscar.
I am Yana, I am the board secretary and volunteer coordinator.
I'm Trumathav, I'm an outgoing board member and the outgoing treasurer. I've been on the board for the last year. Dan DeWitt's gonna be taking over as the treasurer. I also chaired the budget finance committees and helped with some of the Black and White Ball action.
And Troy's done a fabulous job, and Dan is homesick today. We decided that we didn't want him here spreading his goodwill with germs. So, Dan is on your program for the budget, little spiel, but I'm gonna ask Troy if he would fill in for Dan and give us a little rundown of what our budget looks like, and I tell you what, from, I don't even know how long I've been on the board, but from the time that I joined until where we are now, the Community Center has progressed, and it's amazing to have been part of the board, to be able to see how the Community Center has grown, and, you know, all these fabulous people that we have on the board, and all the work that has gone into making the Community Center what it is now, and we just, the sky's the limit. So, Troy, please.
Thank you, Bernie. Yeah, I'm Troy, outgoing treasurer. This past year, the center has raised approximately around $30,000. We currently have about $14,000 in the checking account. Some of those funds have gone to support the daily operations of center, is one thing John mentioned, we now have work-study positions, we've had, what, about three work-study in the past year, looking at expanding that. We've been making some progress, we're gonna be, that's one thing Dan's working on, is being able to accept credit cards for donations, and at the Black and White Ball for the auction and stuff, we'll be able to take credit cards instead of just checks or cash. Some of the other things that we've been working on is establishing a budget for both the center and for Outwards, and its continued growth. Jim Taves, who is former board member, is working on some projects to get more contributions, more sustainability. We've been working on taking some of the money we've got and putting it use money market CDs so that we have some more options to keep the center growing forward.
Troy. There's hard of hearing people.
Oh. Other than that, like I said, the center's growing pretty well. Your continued contributions have helped us move forward with the daily operations. If anyone has any questions, I can take.
So, for those of us who aren't that familiar with the Community Center, what exactly do you do for the community?
Your question, Erin, Bernie.
My question.
Some of the things we've done as far as with our finances, we've supported, helped finance Pride this year, we've helped with.
Outwards.
Outwards is a big part of our budget. We've also sponsored the Health Summit that was last month for the Gay Men's Task Force.
Two-Spirit Gathering.
Two-Spirit Gathering. We've done some youth, helped finance some youth groups and different workshops for people to go to.
And besides the financial contributions that we make, it's also a place where people that are moving to Montana or Missoula, they have a place to contact as far as emails to see, you know, I've gotten emails from people asking what the gay climate is like here, and, you know, people that contact the Community Center wanting to know gay-friendly physicians and other health providers. So, the Community Center, to me, is like this hub of our community, that we can provide outreach, we can provide information for people coming to Missoula, coming to Montana.
We also bought a wheelchair ramp.
Yeah.
For the center.
For the center, yep, so we're trying to make it accessible for everybody.
It also provides a meeting space.
Meeting spaces for several, like Gay Men's Chorus meets on Monday, Tuesday is Lesbian Chat, new name, and we'll have a little more about that in a bit. Wednesday is, every third Wednesday is a board meeting, and it's open to anyone that wants to come and just sit and listen to what happens during a board meeting. Thursday night is Gay Men Together. Fridays, stuff happens, sometimes on Fridays, and Saturdays and Sundays.
Was Wednesday night?
Wednesday night, the third Wednesday of every month, we have a board meeting, so. Fourth Wednesday is.
The Gay Christian?
The Gay Christian Group.
It's a new group.
And it's a new group, and if you want to, if you have a group that wants to meet at the Community Center, we have an application that all you have to do is fill out, and we'll review it, and if it's not like Dobbs and that's applying, we'd probably okay it.
We have a transgendered group that meets on Saturdays, and that is the first and third Saturday of every month, and then we also have the ISCS.
ISCSM.
ISCSM, yeah.
The Court. They meet on Sundays, so that is kind of their evening, a Sunday evening, not every Sunday, but it's just depends on their schedule. Oftentimes, what is it, last Sunday?
Yeah.
Yep.
Last Sunday of the month? Yeah, okay. Did that raise any other questions, concerns, ideas? Hi, Jamie. Another board member that is here to introduce himself.
Hello, I'm Jamie Greer, I'm a student, I just got out of campus, I apologize for being late, so.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
So, the Community Center has formed a relationship with the Missoula Police Department, and our police liaison, Nicole Pafari, is here to just give a little information about what her job is as far as whatever she wants to talk about, but primarily relating to the Community Center. Thanks, Nicole.
Thanks. I know it's, maybe it's kinda weird that I showed up in uniform, we debated whether or not I should, if it makes me look big and scary and you don't know me, then you should know that I'm not really a very big and scary person. In fact, there's quite a few of my friends here that have like never seen me in uniforms, so maybe it was for their benefit so they'd know that I'm actually telling the truth, I really am a cop, for those of you who haven't seen it, so. My name's Nicole Pafari, and I am a K-9 officer for the Missoula Police Department. I've worked for them for three years, over three years, and now I'm also the gay liaison officer. And so, the Missoula Police Department, in my opinion, has actually been attempting to do a fair amount to reach out to the GLBTI community in the last couple of years. Besides my position with the other things that they've started doing is putting all officers through a class, I guess you'd call it like a diversity and cultural sensitivity class that everyone's been to, and so, I guess I say all that to say that, in theory, if you have need for police contact, any officer that you get really should be able to handle your call. That being said, if somebody were to feel like, for some reason, if it was a something, a call that related to their sexuality and it felt like their needs weren't met, or that they were passed over or whatever, then I'm there to make sure, you know, that you're covered in that respect. You know, in addition, I guess I don't have to say that there are those of us in our community that are not as out as others, and so maybe there could be some fear or embarrassment or whatever the issue is. All police officers maintain a level of confidentiality, and I guess with dealing with me, you could just know that that confidentiality is even kicked up a notch, and that, and then, so that is, our hope is that crimes against the GLBTI community is to try to make sure that they are getting reported. Sometimes, for our political purposes, people say, well, what crimes, you know, if they're there, then show them to us, and so we just, we wanna make sure that these things are being reported, so that when we are taking things up, you know, before the legislature or whatever, we can say, hey, you know, this is what's there, and I'm kinda rambling, I'm not a speechwriter, I just kinda go for it. So, but anyway, that's my position, and honestly, I took it over from Scott Oak, he created it, along with the Chief of Police, Rusty Whitman, and I took over for him when he left about a year ago, and to tell you the truth, there has not been, you know, a huge, overwhelming, you know, need for me in the last year, and I don't know if that means it's a good sign, you know, that the other, bless you, Brooks, that the other cops are doing, you know, doing their job and doing it well, or if that means that there haven't been a lot of crimes against the people in our GLBTI community, or maybe it means that we need to do a better job of getting my name out there and my position. So, if anyone here knows, you know, I mean, I guess it's really, the best way of spreading that is by word of mouth, especially to people that don't surface at things like this, or don't, like maybe those members of our community that are less out than the rest of us, we need to make sure that their voices are being heard if they need to, and that they know that they can meet with me over the phone if they don't want me to see them in a confidential place, if that's what they wanna do, I can arrange for all of that. And one other thing I wanna mention is that one of the downsides of being a K-9 officer is I work at night, all the time, and so it happens on a fairly regular basis that I come in and I, it's hard for me to return phone calls, I guess, is what I'm saying, so if you do call me, be patient, because sometimes it can take me a few days to get back to you, so, did you have questions?
If anyone of you or if anyone you know needs to or wants to fill out a hate crime bias, a hate crime bias report, there, we have the information forms available at the center, so you don't even need to like.
Yeah.
It's good to talk to Nicole about it, for sure, but if you don't want to, if you can't somehow, just come into the center, we have the forms there.
Yeah, thank you for that, and I have received a couple of those mailed in, and you can choose to be totally anonymous on that form if you want to.
Basically, if we want action from the police, they need to have the numbers from us, so it's important to report these things that happen, even if we say, oh, well, you know, I wasn't killed, or I didn't go to the hospital, you know, it's important just even if it's a, they need the numbers.
That being said, for what it's worth, from my opinion, we have a really great police department here. I know that cops get a lot of bad press and people are gonna think what they think, but I have, and me and my family have been accepted like to the highest level by the guys that I work with, and a lot of them, as you would expect, come from really, you know, conservative backgrounds and stuff, and they, they really, I feel loved and accepted by them, and so does my partner and our baby, and I'm sure that there's exceptions to the rules, but I'm, in my opinion, you guys can rest easy and know that you really have a really sympathetic and just a good, a good police department, in my opinion, in this city, so. Are there any other questions, anybody?
One thing I'd like to add, Nicole, I don't, I think we gave you keys to the center for.
Yes.
That was, when Nicole was mentioning place of confidentiality, that's one thing the center's made available, is the center to Nicole in case somebody feels more comfortable making a report at the center, if she's able to access that at all hours.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Nicole.
And there actually are copies of the hate bias crimes in the back, kind of by where KD's standing. You don't have to hold them up, KD, but. So, we're gonna have a little presentation by the Montana Women's Chorus, I think, Carol, you're gonna speak about it a little bit, is that right?
So, is Gary gonna talk about the men's chorus?
Gary's gonna talk about the men's chorus too, but. And don't forget to eat the food over here for crying out loud, okay? There's, I mean, it's good stuff.
I will, I like that. Is this thing really on?
Yes.
Because I'm not hearing it back there, but anyhow, it's for the camera, high camera. All right. So, over the past year, it's been about a year now, the Montana Women's Chorus has come together again and we're singing, and I just wanna announce that we're an open-affirming women's chorus, and if you're interested in joining the chorus, we sing on Monday nights at the Jeanette Rankin Peace Center from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., and it's the second and fourth Mondays in the library. Come, join us, you're welcome, you don't have any tests as far as whether you can sing or not, just come, and we have a lot of fun singing, and we also believe that singing can change things. Singing isn't about empowering ourselves, and so we come together and do that, and we have sung with the Gay Men's Chorus.
Hi, I'm Gary from the Missoula Gay Men's Chorus, and our mission is to reach out to the communities of Montana and goodwill relating through music, the intentions of the gay and lesbian population of Montana. Four years ago, we did a state tour that took us to five cities in the state in conjunction with Pride Montana. We had a great time, had some great learning experiences, and some awesome things happened for our chorus. Our chief fundraiser every year is our Christmas cabaret show, which is the December 8th and 9th this year at the Wilma, formerly Mary Ann's Restaurant. We will be selling tickets shortly, the tickets are $45, that does include your dinner and a very nice dessert choice of three different entrees, so you do have to talk to a chorus member about that, and we're all over the place. Our chorus meets Monday evenings at the center from 7:00 to about 9:30. Right now, as far as new members, we are closed until after the first of the year because we are on focus now for the Christmas show, and we need to be concentrating on getting that going and underway, and then right after the first of the year, we'll be open again for new members, so really want you to think about it, we're 12 strong right now, we'd like to be 25 strong, so if you like to sing, come and see us on Monday night, if you wanna come and visit the chorus, you can do so, do that at any time. If you can sing a little bit, we may let you sing, but right now, like I say, we're on focus for the Christmas show, and one of the fun things that we got to do this year is to sing with the Missoula Women's Chorus at the Jeanette Rankin Peace Center, we had a great time, it was a very rewarding experience for the guys as well as for me, and I wanna say thank you for the women for including us in that, and mostly this one here, so come to our Christmas cabaret if you want tickets, see me afterwards, I'll put you down and make sure a chorus member gets hold of you, and that's it.
And hopefully, come August 24th, 2008, the Missoula Gay Men's Chorus and the Montana Women's Chorus will again be singing together at the Jeanette Rankin Peace Party, which we did this last year, we're gonna make this a traditional thing. They liked us so much doing it together.
I did, had a good time.
We had a great time. So, join both choruses, either chorus, and come sing with us at the Peace Party on August 24th.
You don't have to be a gay man to join the Missoula Gay Men's Chorus, you do have to be a man, we work with male voices, so, thank you.
Great, thanks. Move it just up here.
(Singing) Break 'em on down, break 'em on down these walls between us, break 'em on down, break, come on down, break 'em on down these walls between us, break, come on down, break 'em on down these walls between us, break, come on down, break 'em on down these walls, these walls, these walls between us, break 'em on down, break, come on down, break 'em on down these walls between us, break 'em on down, break, come on down, break 'em on down these walls between us, break, come on down, break 'em on down these walls between us, break, come on down, break 'em on down these walls, these walls, these walls between us.
We're gonna do two songs. The first one is "Oh Mama Bakku," which means "The Mother's Way Back, Oh They Used To Pray." And then we're gonna do one more after that, just give you a little sampling, and then we're all, always looking for more members also. We meet on Monday nights at the Jeanette Rankin Peace Center, and you don't have to be a lesbian to join us, but you do have to be a woman, and so, Monday night, 7:00 at the Peace Resource Center, and right now, we're just meeting every other Monday, although.
Second and fourth.
Second and fourth, although I'm gonna work on trying to make that change to every week, but we'll see about that, so.
(Singing) Oh Mama Bakku Dala Babe Tandeza, oh Mama Bakku Dala Babe Tandeza, Babe Tandeza, Babe Tandeza, Babe Tandeza, Babe Tandeza, oh Mama Bakku Dala Babe Tandeza, oh Mama Bakku Dala Babe Tandeza, Babe Tandeza, Babe Tandeza, Babe Tandeza, oh Mama Bakku Dala Babe Tandeza, oh Mama Bakku Dala Babe Tandeza, Babe Tandeza, Babe Tandeza, Babe Tandeza, oh Mama Bakku Dala Babe Tandeza, oh Mama Bakku Dala Babe Tandeza, Babe Tandeza, Babe Tandeza, Babe Tandeza, Babe Tandeza, oh Mama Bakku Dala Babe Tandeza, oh Mama Bakku Dala Babe Tandeza, Babe Tandeza, Babe Tandeza, Babe Tandeza, Babe Tandeza.
Yeah.
(Applause)
There's a land that I heard of once in a lullaby. Somewhere over the rainbow skies are blue. And the dreams that you dare to dream really do come true. Someday I'll wish upon a star and wake up where the clouds are far behind me. Where troubles melt like lemon drops away above the chimney tops. That's where you'll find me. Somewhere over the rainbow, bluebirds fly. Birds fly over the rainbow, why then oh why can't I? If happy little bluebirds fly beyond the rainbow, why oh why can't I? (applause)
So come join us, we have a really good time. Let's hear for rainbows! Woo-hoo! Thank you, Montana Women's Chorus. And thanks, Gary. Thanks, Gary, for the presentation about the gay men's chorus. We are now gonna, we're keeping this moving right along, because the sun was out when we came in, and I'm like so ready to go back out in it, because being in Missoula, you know what's coming. So, we're gonna have just a couple of presentations by some of the folks that are in charge of or monitoring or mediating or, what's the other M-word that I want?
Moderating.
Moderating, that's it. Thank you. Some of the groups at the community center. Nick, if you come over, come over, if you come up and do a little, tell us a little bit about Gay Men Together. Brianna is willing to talk about Lesbian Chat, AKA Women's Night. And Emily, Emily's not here. Emily is the moderator for the transgendered group, which meets whatever.
First and third Saturday.
First and third Saturday. Okay, John will talk about that. Okay, Nick?
Gay Men Together used to be a group in Missoula like twenty-five years ago. Little puppet strings. Gay Men Together was a group that started meeting in Montana and Missoula about nineteen-seventy-nine or nineteen-eighty. And when the community center currently started, we just had like a night for men when men could come to the center, meet other guys. And then I decided, well, you know, if it had a name, it might be easier to advertise and market. So we changed the name back to Gay Men Together. And it really is not a moderated group, it's simply a time, it's a safe space for gay men or bi men to show up where there are other gay and bi men that's drug and alcohol-free. We can actually talk to somebody without having to compete with alcohol and smoke and loud music and, you know, whatever else going on in the background. And right at the moment, there's a core group of about five or six of us that meet, and other people kind of drop in. The youngest member or person who shows up is like forty-one. So, that's both a good thing, because it's a place for older gay men to go. It's kind of a drawback for younger gay men who are new to the community and aren't meeting people the way they'd like to. And so we're trying to work out something. Bernie and I talked just a little bit about having a younger gay men's group and also starting like a newbies group for people who are just coming out or new to Missoula or whatever, however that evolves. So, if you're free on Thursday night, have nothing to do and don't want to get drunk, stop at the center.
Thanks, Nick.
Hi, I'm Brianna Barber. I just started facilitating what we were calling Lesbian Chat. We've actually just changed the name to Women's Night, just to be a little bit more inclusive and just kind of a rebirth of the whole group. As well as changing the name, we're also starting to have a schedule, and we're trying to balance really fun topics with kind of serious topics. And mostly just get together to discuss, and sometimes we're gonna have some guest presentations, and other times we're just gonna get together and have fun and hang out. It's open to any girl who likes girls. Doesn't matter if you're lesbian or bisexual or queer, however you identify, come, we'll welcome ya.
And that's at the community center, seven o'clock on Tuesday nights. Yes, and John's gonna say something about the transgender nights.
Well, yeah, I don't see Emily here. And so Emily is new to the center, and she has decided to start the transgender group back attending or going to the center instead of the UCC. And so, she's really looking for support from the community, if you know of anyone that is transgender. They meet on the first and third Saturday of every month. And they meet at five-thirty PM until seven. And again, that's, I think there's just a few of them that have been showing up, and she's trying to get the word out and have more transgender persons attend. It's sort of a support group, but also kind of a social, and just allows transgendered persons to meet other transgendered persons in our community. And we're really thrilled that they're back at the community center downtown. Emily's information, I believe, is in Outwords. So, if you know of anyone that's transgendered and would like more information, you can check that out. Thank you.
There are membership envelopes available at the back table, too, if people want to join the community center, or if you're already a member and your membership, yearly membership is up, you can renew it by filling one of those out. We're gonna have a little presentation by Josh, Ryan or Sam, we're gonna be here, but they were detained somehow, we don't know how exactly. Hopefully in a good way. But Josh is gonna talk about, Josh is gonna talk a little bit about the ISCSM, and then he's also gonna talk about the Montana Empower Montana Project. Go, Josh. Thank you.
Unfortunately, Ms. Jade couldn't be here tonight, because we only let her out on Saturdays, so, which is a betterment for the community, I promise. I'm just kidding, no. My name is Josh Peters McBride, and I am vice president on the board of directors for ISCSM, the Imperial Sovereign Court of the State of Montana. And hopefully, by reading Outwords and throughout the community, you know that we just basically wrapped up our fiscal year. Rosalinda De La Luna, who was empress of, and executive director of the board for the court, just had a very successful year. The court is the one who does the drag shows in town, who hosts benefits and everything through the ISCSM. And this year, we actually had a record-breaking year. We gave back to the community, I think it was about six to seven thousand dollars that we raised, which is all in part to you guys for coming to our shows, supporting us, and continuing that give-back sort of community sponsorship. So, I would like to thank you all for your continued to support for the court. We do have a show this weekend, it's our Halloween show. It's gonna be Saturday night at Club Q. It's going to start, I believe, at ten o'clock. And again, that's this Saturday night at Club Q, and money's raised to that just in return, go back out to our community organizations. I think it went, we had dollars go out to DOVs and Safe Harbor up in the Kalispel area that go out to domestic violence victims. We had youth, youth groups, the Lambda Alliance received donations, the university group here. We had groups throughout Billings and Great Falls and Bozeman as well that received monetary donations. And the community center, gosh, don't forget about that, the community center also received a donation from them as well. So, if you have a chance to go out and support them, I really, really encourage you all to do so, because they're a great group that gives back to our community. And also, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the Montana Empowerment Project. It's an intervention through the state of Montana. We meet at the Western Montana Gay and Lesbian Community Center about once a month for meetings, and that's not including our social nights, which we meet at the community center as well. And the Empowerment Project is an intervention for young gay bisexual men in our community that goes and works on, it's a safe sex intervention, meaning we go out and teach health education, safe sex practices, and that community feeling in general. We really believe that as the youth, we can learn from each other through shared experiences by having an open affirming discussion about health issues that affect our young community today. So, that's a little brief history about what the Empowerment Project is. And like I said, we meet at the community center. If you know any youth, young gay bisexual youth in the community who you think would benefit from a group such as the Empowerment Project, feel free to have them come to the community center, have them stop by. So many times, as you know, the community center and youth today don't have really a place to go. They don't feel like they have a place to go to, to belong. And so if you know people in your community, gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender, intersex, you know, send them to the community center, like we set up here, they have a place to go. And the Empowerment Project is just one of those places. So, thank you guys very much again for your support for ISCSM and empowerment.
Thanks, Josh. There's a lot of food left, people, please. I cannot eat that much. I could try, but guarantee ya, ain't gonna happen. We're gonna have a little informative presentation by our new Outwords editor and our outer, Outwords editor. So, Sarah Brown is our incoming, and Caitlin, I don't even know what the hell you're listening to. Caitlin is our outgoing one.
So I guess, first of all, I'd just like to thank everyone for supporting Outwords as we transitioned from the Gazette, as some of you may recall, to Outwords last May. And it's been really exciting, and we're proud of what we have accomplished, but I also feel like the paper is destined for even greater things through Sarah. She has a lot of time and desire and talent that she'll bring to the paper, but she also is going to need your help. As you know, it takes a lot of work to produce a newspaper once a month, and it can't happen just from one person. So, I hope you all will support Sarah, she's great. You wanna talk?
Sure. I don't really have much to add to that, really, other than working on an addition that's coming out in the next week or two, should be really good, it's on housing issues in the gay community. Next month, we're gonna focus on families, since we're going into the holidays. So, I'd love to get pieces from people, whatever family means to you, whatever the holidays mean to you. Really, my mission, really, being the new editor, is to really get people's voices out there. I really feel like the more visible we are as a community, the stronger we are. So, please, add your voice to the discussion. I'm not averse to controversy, so.
And Sarah's also available to help people who, you know, wanna get their, maybe they've never written before, but wanna get their ideas into words somehow. She has the time and energy to do that with all of you, and so I hope everyone will take advantage of that, even if you've never written before, it's kind of a great way to express yourself, and Sarah can help you, so.
Yeah, definitely.
And also, if you know of businesses, or if you have a business that wants to advertise with Outwords, we definitely depend on our advertising revenue to keep us from totally sucking the community center dry. So, you can talk to John about that, or go to gaymontana.org, and you can find out more.
One thing with Outwords, just to be aware of, is we are, we're not in the black with Outwords, we're in the red, and that's okay. We, as a center, as a center board, have determined that Outwords is a lot more important to the Montana community. You know, we're trying to make this statewide, I'm trying to reach out to other communities like Great Falls and Kalispel that don't seem to, yeah, have the, the community like we do here in Missoula. And hopefully, as it becomes more statewide and its distribution increases, that will also increase our writers and authors for Outwords. And so, it makes Sarah's job a lot easier. And if you know of anyone outside Missoula, do let them know this is a statewide paper, and their input is really important. And we're trying to make sure, especially on the community resources page and community events, that other communities are represented. So, that's, that's my, what I have to say about Outwords. So I've done a lot with Caitlin and Sarah, hopefully making their jobs easier and.
Hugely.
Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, so please write.
So you can find out more on the website or pick up an issue, we have some up front.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Caitlin was pretty instrumental in getting Outwords where it is now, and I'm sure Sarah's just gonna continue that process. Also, if you know of any businesses in town that would house the paper or outside of town, like John was talking about, please let us know at the community center, so we, again, the more it's out there, the more visible we are. So, John is gonna talk a little bit about our fabulous Black and White Ball that we have had the last two years. The first year, it was at Andy Lau's office, last year, we had it at the Doubletree. And it's not only for our community, but we had a lot of straight people there that were talking about it after and are looking forward to it again this year. So, it's a great event, and John will tell us a little bit more about it.
Okay, so, yes, as Bernie had mentioned, the Black and White Ball has been going on for two years. We had it originally at Andy Lau's office, and we outgrew it, like in the first year. If some of you were there, you might remember, it was, it was hard to get through the crowd, it was so crowded. So, we did expand and doubled our attendance. Last year, we had about three hundred persons that attended the Black and White Ball at the Doubletree Hotel. This year, we hope to increase that as, again, into four to five hundred persons, which is what the ballroom can accommodate. It's great seeing so many of the supporters of the Black and White Ball and the audience. How many people attended last year's Black and White Ball? So, it's, it's just an incredible event that we've started. It's definitely, its main purpose is for the community center and to help support the community center and the activities and events and things that we want to do, anywhere from supporting other organizations like Pride, to also supporting, you know, getting an electronic database for our library, so that's available online. So there's a lot of different things that we're hoping to do, and also all the work study that we have. The Black and White Ball does have a committee, I chair that committee. If anybody's interested in being on that committee, please let me know. We're always looking for individuals with some talent in regards to fundraising. Since this is going into my third year of chairing this committee, we've learned a lot, and Bernie's been with me from the beginning, and we've learned so much, and we actually have. have a lot of things down pat, where it's gonna go a lot smoother this year than it did last year and the year before. We learn every year something new in regards to how to run that function a little bit better. So, your ideas are welcomed. What else about Black and White? It's gonna be March 8th. We are trying to make it the second Saturday of every March, just sort of to establish that for not only the third annual, but all Black and White Balls in the future. We understand we might have a conflict with the Democrats, but we'll have to see. We hope to not move that date, but, do you have any update on that, Jamie? No? The Democrats haven't decided their date yet, but we have, so...
They thought we were on the same team.
A year ago, I know, exactly. So, there is some concern, though, because we really do wanna see more representatives there, and we want to, we'd love to see the governor and John Tester attend. Who knows, maybe his son will attend in his absence. But, the Black and White Ball really does rely on the sponsorship, and again, I see many of you sponsors here, I also see many of you that just attended the ball, and that helps as well. The sponsorship actually pays for the ball, and depending on how much sponsorship we have, there's a certain percentage that goes to pay for the ball, and then the rest goes to the Community Center. So, this last year, we raised about $24,000, and we spent about eight. So, not bad. That means that the percentage of those sponsorships, the majority of it went to the Community Center and not the actual ball, not the actual event. All ticket sales go directly to the Center. We haven't talked ticket price yet this next year, but we like to keep it around $30, because we feel that that's affordable, and if you look at all the other balls that are in Missoula, they tend to be...
Look at 'em.
They tend...
I'm just so hot.
No puns intended. They tend to be, you know, $50 to $75, just to attend those other functions. Like the hospice ball, and...
All those other balls.
All those other balls. So...
Trying to keep our balls cheap.
Nice thing about... As Bernie had mentioned, we have a lot of people that attend the ball, and a lot of different sponsorships. We had several, like, doctors and attorneys that aren't necessarily LGBTI persons, but are LGBTI-friendly. Professors that, again, are not necessarily LGBTI, but just friendly, that really wanna see the Community Center succeed. And so, a list of sponsors, you can see at the Center, we have the board still up at the Center, and you can see all those persons. We had over 75 sponsors. It was just incredible. This Missoula community amazes me. I don't think that we have any other, you know, communities this size, I would have to say, in the US, that are this size, that are so supportive of not only our balls, but other balls.
It's important to support your balls, I hear.
As you, as you all know, Missoula is just a very giving community, whether it's the hospice ball or the Black and White Ball.
You're so cute.
So, anyway, I think that, if you, does anyone have any questions about the Black and White Ball? Any questions for me in regards to what it's all about? Or did I miss anything? Did I miss anything? Yes.
I have one dress.
That's a really good question. It does, does tend to be more formal, because it's kind of our LGBTI prom, so to speak, especially Lambda, Lambda tends to have their own prom for the younger generation, but it is kind of our prom, so a lot of people will get tuxes, including, like, Bernie and some other women, and a lot of guys. And some women come very formal. Some persons just decide to come in black jeans, and a nice white shirt, or whatever. It's, the theme is Black and White, and so, we just ask that everybody kind of come in a more of a Black and White theme. But, yeah, it's very, Missoula tends to be casual, but you'll see a lot of people in tuxes and things like that as well. And I hope all of you can attend, because it's a great event. One thing also, I just have to mention, I know I'm talking a lot, but it's just such an important event for our community. The Black and White Ball, we have, we have scholarships available as well. So, not only is it $30, which we feel is very affordable, a lot of our sponsors, you know, I'll just use Mary Stranahan as an example, she didn't use all of her tickets, and so, a lot of these sponsors that don't use their tickets go towards that scholarship fund. And this last Black and White Ball, we did not reject a single person. And so, I think we had over 70 scholarships, including people that, in our community, that couldn't attend the ball, but simply bought two tickets to give, give away to students and other LGBTI persons that are living lightly. So, again, it just shows the generosity of our community. Okay.
What? No.
Did I mention balls too many times? The 10th anniversary celebration. So, this, this area is a little gray, and I guess I'm supposed to talk on this, too. This is, we believe, next year is our 10th anniversary. We're looking at the 501(c)(3) documentation, just to confirm that, but we filed back in 1998, I think in October or November of 98. And so, next, next year is going to be our 10th anniversary, and we are going to have another Gay Town Hall meeting, but there might be something special, so we might make it a little bit more special. What else about the 10th anniversary?
Further events will be disclosed as they develop. How's that?
As you all know, the Community Center was downtown in its earlier days, and then it moved to Oak Street, and now it's moved back downtown, and we were hoping that that was a good move on the community's part. You know, we had a few people that didn't really care for the move, but they've even come around now and sort of liked the downtown area and having it as a part of the community. We're even a part of the Missoula Downtown Association, so just to really, yeah, show that we are there, and we're out, and we're proud.
Hey, are we gonna do the first Friday, the opening day? The first Friday?
Are we doing that? November?
Yes.
Do I wanna talk about it?
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know it then.
Oh.
Get up with the microphone. Please.
If you guys haven't been to the Community Center, you need to go. We have a great library, a good sitting area, internet access, it's a great place, just go and chill, if you wanna meet with someone downtown and have a cup of coffee, just go there. We're gonna have an open house, and it'll be November 2nd, that's the first Friday. We're gonna have some art shown, some local artists, and, you know, some light, appy, whatever, drinky stuff. And it'll be just a good time to come in, wander around, check out what the Center has to offer. So, you come, all of you, and tell everyone you know.
That is an idea that we had kicked around. Hi, Jason, do you wanna come up and talk about MIQAC for a minute?
One minute of your time.
Okay, come up, please. I'm sorry, I just went right over, because I let Josh do both at one time.
These boys take over all the time, don't they? I know. Hi, I'm Jason Peranto, program coordinator for MIQAC, Montana Youth Queer Action Coalition, and I feel like this program needs to be represented in this group, because it affects definitely our community, the Community Center, the organization that supports it, Missoula AIDS Council, and Montana Target Prevention. And that's exactly what this program is, it's an action coalition. It's getting youth out, speaking what they want in their community, what they wanna see from their legislature, what they wanna see from their police department, what, what they're feeling about what's going on in their schools. We have a close association with gay straight alliances, flagships, YWCA, Planned Parenthood. I mean, it's a collaboration, I mean, it is an action coalition. And we, my sidekick here, Mihha and I represented, she represented the Community Center, and I represented the Missoula AIDS Council at a conference in Spokane about youth group centers. So, basically, like, empowerment, MIQAC, and the Community Center overall, were brought together to see what we could do in the Northwest and what is established. I think a lot of places, especially like Missoula, where our community is so caring and so vast, that we have a chance to bring our youth up the way that we want them to have a voice. So, if you want more information, please come talk to me, there'll be information at the Community Center, or you can stop by your friendly Missoula AIDS Council. So, thanks, guys.
One event that's coming up very shortly that we almost forgot to mention, thank God we have several brains up here, because one just doesn't do it. We have the, where is it on here? The soiree that's held at Karis Nursery, and it's on the 17th, Saturday. 10% of the proceeds, or 10% of the proceeds, is that the...
10% of all sales.
10% of all sales are donated to the Community Center that night, so come and buy your Christmas ornaments and whatnots there.
It's something they do for us every year.
They do that, yeah. It's fabulous. So, it's from 6 to 9, mark it down, on November 17th, is the 10th annual, so it's gotta be our 10th. We're going with the 10th. We're going with it. So, yeah. So, there you have it.
I'm the coordinator for that also, if anybody wants to volunteer, or needs any more information about that.
And you can contact Mihha through the Community Center.
I have cards.
And she has cards. And she knows how to use them. We are gonna do nominations for the board right now, if people are sitting out there that just have this burning desire to be on the board of the Community Center, if they have a burning desire for someone else that they know to be on the board of the Community Center, we wanna hear from you right now. Don't rush the stage.
Okay, because they're all going to support us in our other endeavors, so...
You can always volunteer for committees, you can always volunteer just to come and sit at the Community Center and to help us keep the doors open. And it, let me tell ya, it's a fun place to be, just sitting there, you never know who's gonna walk through the door. I met several fabulous people when we were still down at the Fourth and Oak, the truck There was fabulous people that would come in and just, you know, drove by, happened to see where the Community Center was, walked in and just sat down and said, "I'm new to Missoula, help." You know, it was incredible.
With the amount of people that are leaving the board, do you have a forum still?
Yes.
Yes.
How many?
What?
How many vacancies do we have? With all the shift...
Five, probably.
Do we? Five.
How many do you need for a forum?
50% plus one.
It's just a proportion of how many people are on the board. Oh, so there's not, like, you don't have to have a certain number?
We don't have to have, you know, 30 on the board.
If we only had three board members, you would need, you know...
Three.
Three.
That would be the forum, yeah.
If we had four board members, then that's a better example, we would need at least three of them, or if we had five.
And the board, I mean, we're some pretty fun people there on the board. We do serious stuff, but we also have a good time while we're doing it.
Could you tell what board members' responsibilities are?
Board members' responsibilities are as follows. Show up for the board meetings. That'd be number one.
How many board meetings do you have a month?
We have one. We have committees, however, that meet more often, like, when the Black and White is going on. Whoever's involved in the Black and White Committee will meet more often than that, but the general board usually only meets once a month, which is the third Wednesday, at 7:00 at the Community Center.
The board also interviews the, the work-study folks that work at the Center.
Do you have criteria for a board member?
Yes.
Yes, we do, and I didn't bring it with me. We have, like, applications for board membership, did we bring any of those?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can email, mhm.
Is there one that I filled out, how did you get questions?
I know one of the general criteria would be a member of the Community Center to stand in.
Yes, you have to be a member of the Community Center. I won't read the part that you filled in, Oscar, okay? Unless you want me to. Okay. Just some demographics, you know, age, and how you identify. Why you wanna be a member of the Community Center. If you've served on other boards, and how long, what kinds of activities you participated in with those boards.
Your role in the community.
Experience and involvement in nonprofit organizations in the community. What kinds of fundraising you've been involved in, and if you're willing to do that as well as, because that's how the Community Center stays open, is fundraising, and that's a big part of what we do as board members. The Black and White, like John was talking about, is our biggest fundraiser of the year, but there's other times that we do fundraising. So, you have to be, you have to be on board for that. And then, what excites you about being on the board? That's, that's always a good question.
And I guess I would just say, like, if you don't, like, if you just wanna test the waters and see what the board and what our committees are all about, join a committee. Just join a committee, you know, sit on that, help out where you can there, and then if you feel like you wanna give a little more, join the board, you know, just get a test of what the Community Center, you know, has to offer and everything like that.
Or come to a couple of board meetings.
Or just come to the Center, hang out.
Yeah. Tinky Winkie's there, you know, our, our national mascot.
I'm there, I'm not that bad. Hang out with me.
That's what I was talking about.
Do you hear Winkie?
Yeah.
No, if it's worth mentioning, some of you might be wondering why a bunch of the board hasn't been, I know, like, for Mark, you know, give people a chance, and they haven't been part of it. Step up, for me, I would still certainly be on the board, but I have changes at work that are adding responsibilities, so I can't put up the time I'd like to at the Center. I definitely intend to be back once my new job situation stabilizes.
And life happens to board members as well, you know, and the board has, historically, since I've been on board, on the board, you know, there's like ebb and flow, you know, people leave, new people come on, which is always good, because it gives us new ideas, it gives us new ideas, and new ways to look at things. And you, being part of the Community Center, part of the community, it helps to hear from you, to tell us what direction you want us to go, what you would like to see us more involved in.
What's going wrong?
I wasn't gonna say that.
Because we make mistakes sometimes.
But just ideas, you know, we're always open to hearing from the community, because we're your community center. So, it says nominations and elections of the board. So, I guess that basically means the board that's up here right now, if everyone is in, everyone that is a member of the Community Center can vote right now to keep the current members on, and we can even either do that individually or as a group, right? Yeah? So, yes.
I'm just curious, why is, why are you losing so many board members? Is their term up or something?
Well, Mark, like you said, he's been on the board for four years, I'll probably be leaving next... I'll probably be leaving next year because I don't know how long I've been on the board either, but it's probably close to that.
I heard, I thought I heard you say it's a three-year term? Is that what...
Three years, maybe.
Yeah. But...
Someone had a baby.
Mhm.
Laura had a baby.
Yeah. Laura had a baby. Life happens, you know, to board members as well as the rest of us. So I guess for board members to resign, I don't think anyone has actually resigned because we were crappy.
I smell, I come from practice every, every meeting and I smell really sweaty, so people are quitting.
She's the crappy one. She's the one why people are quitting. No, um...
Well, I'm just moving to Missoula and I, I don't know, I have a burning desire but I'm definitely interested.
Cool.
I thought you had something to say about testing the waters.
Yeah, sure. Absolutely.
Again, like you said, you know, everyone's welcome at the board meeting, so if you're interested, you know, please feel free to...
Sit in.
...sit in and...
Mhm. Third Wednesday of every month, 7:00 at the community center. And the community center is... Yeah, it's on Higgins. You know where the Hallmark shop is? Second floor.
Actually, yeah, normally, but there is a change for next month's meeting.
There is?
Yeah, it's a holiday.
To the 14th.
Oh, the 14th, that's right, because Thanksgiving is that Wednesday. So we're doing it a week early?
Week early.
Okay. I wrote it down, so I don't have to remember it. You know that.
I don't know, you're too young.
So anyone else have anything they want to say? Did we miss anything?
Just realized that it's a volunteer board. We are a working board and so it's an hour and a half of your time each month at the meetings. And then typically it's, it can range from anywhere, I won't tell you what I do, but from two to six hours a month, I'd say, when you, depending on what committees you're working on and such. And so about two to six hours additional volunteer time on top of that hour and a half.
We would like if you would volunteer more time. That would be good.
Other questions? Comments? Take food home with you, please. There's napkins, wrap it up. Put it in your pocket. Thank you, everyone, for coming and don't forget to stop by Bernice's and the Good Food Store because what?
Don't we have to go through with the subject of the board?
Oh, yeah. Didn't we do that? Okay. All those in, okay, do you want to move that? Do you want to make a motion, Nick?
I would make a motion that we accept the board. The community center has a slated written...
Anyone want to second that? All in favor? Raise your right leg. All opposed? Okay. Live long and prosper. Thank you for coming.